Area Chamber of Commerce, City Council Candidates Forum. I'm Alan Talansky. I'm the moderator and I'm the Chair of the Development and Public Policy Committee of the Chamber, and I'm here in that role. I just wanted to let you know this forum is being shown live on TV and it's also being taped, and it'll be shown several times again, October 17th, 18th, 19th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd on TV. So it'll be more than this evening. I'm glad we have a good showing and audience here, but we will also, I'm sure, have a home audience watching. Let me introduce Cheryl Angelus, who's the CEO, would you stand up Cheryl, of the Chamber of Commerce, and Linda Asbury, who is the CEO of The Edge. We have other people here from the Chamber of Commerce also. I won't introduce other people, but let me introduce our candidates. We have Joe Gothelz, who is one of the candidates, Josh Hug, Mayor David Lim, and I'm going to call you if it's all right by your first names, and Robert Ross. And I thank you very much for coming. I thank you for your time, and I also thank you for your service to the city of San Mateo. It's great to see we have a system that works so close to home, and it doesn't work like some of the other systems we've seen not working very recently. I guess that was a political statement. I apologize. We have some initial questions that were selected from questions from members of the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to take some of those questions. Linda Asbury has placed three-by-five cards with some pens that anyone who wants to can get a three-by-five card and ask a question. I don't know if we'll get to it. Hopefully, we will. We're going to ask the questions in order, starting with Joe today. We'll start with Joe, and then we'll start the first question with Josh, and then David, and we're going to do it in turn, so everyone gets a chance. Yes. Okay, Karen's here. Good. Geez, I feel much better now. And this is Karen Schmidt. Welcome.
Thanks.
What we're going to do is we're going to start, and we're going to give each candidate two minutes to talk about themselves. And we're going to start with Joe.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Alan. Thank you to the Chamber and thank you to The Edge for inviting us here and hosting us. I think, appreciate it very much. My name is Joe Gothelz. I grew up here in San Mateo. I grew up on Aragon Boulevard. I went to St. Matthew's Catholic School right there on Aragon and El Camino. Then I went to St. Ignatius in San Francisco. I went down to Santa Clara for my undergrad in microbiology. Went to San Jose State for a master's degree in public health, and then went back to Santa Clara for law school. I've been working in the Alameda County District Attorney's Office for quite some time, and I've been able to see the relationship between safety and business development in Oakland, and how that also can have a negative impact on the business environment when you don't have a safe city. One of the other things that I've been doing since I've been a homeowner in San Mateo is that I've been on the Public Works Commission for the last three years. I'm the Chair of the Public Works Commission. I know that infrastructure is essential to the business development community, and we have very important infrastructure needs here in San Mateo. So being on the Public Works Commission has been very important to me. One of the other things that I do now is that I'm on the Peninsula Healthcare District Board, and we do three things on the Peninsula Healthcare District Board. We have a role as a developer. We have a role of oversight over the Sutter Group, who manages the NPHS Hospital, and we also give out grants. So in those roles, I've lived in San Mateo my whole life. My grandfather currently lives here. We're part of a four-generation family here in San Mateo. It's one of the great things that I get to do is I get to enjoy things like music in the park that we had this summer. My grandfather came, he's at the Sunrise right next to Central Park, and came over in his wheelchair, and my daughters were there. It's one of the great things about San Mateo. It's one of the things that I'm very proud of. So I'm glad to be here. Thank you all for inviting me.
Thank you. Josh?
First, I'd like to thank the Chamber and The Edge for hosting, and Alan, thank you for moderating tonight. I am here with you tonight because I've been given a second chance at life. Eleven years ago, I received a liver transplant from my sister, and really that caused me to reflect on my life as it was going, and really rededicate, I decided through that process to rededicate myself to the community. And I moved here 15 years ago as an engineer for Intel, and through that experience, I decided to get more involved. I went back to school. I got a master's in public administration, and now I work for a nonprofit that works to ensure that everybody who works, grows up, and grows old here, has an opportunity to live and thrive here. Through that 15 years, I've done quite a bit for the community. I've been involved in two commissions, the Community Relations Commission, where we allocate federal funds towards homeless programs, youth-at-risk programs. Through the Planning Commission, I've been able to help foster the city as it grows, as it embraces the challenges of a thriving community through careful planning and listening to the community. As your next city council member, I plan to do four things. I plan to keep the citizens of the city actively involved in all planning processes for the future, whether it's deciding how our city is configured, or how the people in our city can be successful in every aspect of their lives. I will be restoring, I will work to restore service levels. We've been through a downturn for the last five years, and we're in sore need of bringing our service levels back to the levels that they were prior to the downturn. And through partnerships, I plan to ensure that every, that all facets of our community are comprehended in our future growth. With that, I am committed to supporting this city, and I thank you.
David?
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and The Edge for hosting this Candidates Forum, and I want to thank all the members of the audience who are here and everybody on TV who's watching this. This is a very important election, and I'm honored to have served the last four years as your council member, and I'm looking forward to serving another four years. One of the hallmarks of my first four years on council has been my accountability and my accessibility. When I got on the council, I told myself I was going to be a candidate for the people. And so I've had more community meetings, I've had more outreach to members of the community, and I intend to do that. I think it's important, not only for the business community to be accessible, but for all members of the community. And I've said before that the business community is no different from the rest of the community. So I treat the business community just like I do our neighborhood associations, our individual citizens. Everyone deserves to have a voice in our city government. You know, I grew up in public service as a schoolteacher, and now as a lawyer, as a deputy district attorney in Alameda County. I've served on the Community Relations Commission and Neighborhood Watch. But I grew up in a family where my parents were small business owners. And so they weren't just business owners, they were members of the community. And I've tried to remember that as I worked through the issues in our city. I've made myself accessible by, you know, giving people my cellphone address, my cellphone number, and people have been able to reach me individually and get answers from me and not from a member of staff or just a robotic automated answer. I'm looking forward to discussing a lot of issues. We've done a lot of good things over the first four years. We have a lot more to do, and I'm looking forward to talking about all the wonderful things that we've been doing and the great places that we are going moving forward in the next four years. So thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Robert?
Hi, I'm Robert Ross. I too would like to thank you for hosting this forum and for the citizens in the audience, and also the citizens that will view us on our television. Again, I'm Robert Ross. I started here in the city of San Mateo 33 years ago as a policeman. I worked here in the city of San Mateo as a policeman and ultimately a police lieutenant for a total of 28 and a half years. And during that time, I had the opportunity to get to know the families, the neighborhoods, the churches, the schools, pretty much everyone that's part of our community, the business community as well. It's really been quite a journey for me. I really do love and care for each and every one of you. I care for the city of San Mateo and the future that we'll have. Four years ago, you were kind enough to trust me and vote for me, and I've been serving as your city councilperson since then. During that time, I've not only served the city here on the council, but I've also served on several county committees, one being one of the health committees, the local adult school board I serve on as a board member. I also serve on the League of California Cities, and what that does is represent your interest at a state level. We look at administrative policy, which is laws that are coming down from the Assembly. We look at those to see if they're going to benefit you, the citizens and the city, and if they're not, then we send them back and ask for reiterations of those. So I've had a great career here in the city of San Mateo. I hope that you'll consider me favorably and vote for me also.
Thank you. Karen?
Is this on? Good evening. Thank you for hosting Chamber of Commerce and The Edge. I am a businesswoman, but I also, I say I come from a long line of German bankers, but I have an Irish heart, so I sort of have the business side to bring to the table and the social conscience. I'm a native Californian. My parents, we lived all over California. They raised five kids, and we settled in the north in the 70s. And I went to St. Francis High School and then on to Cal Poly, studied graphic communications in hopes to become an architect, but realized I wanted to get out in four years and took architecture classes along the way, so I have a strong design aesthetic. And then I moved to San Francisco, worked in advertising, and really cut my teeth there. And when I got married, became pregnant, moved down to San Mateo, my brother-in-law was the developer of the Phase One of Bay Meadows, and he said, "This is a great place to grow, raise a kid." So we came down, and he was right. Then I moved, I had, my son was born, and when he was five, we moved up to Crystal Springs neighborhood because I wanted him to go to Highlands Elementary, where I now work in San Mateo and I'm able to volunteer at a school. So I taught art and action for five years. I've also been chairs on a lot of their major fundraising committees, so that's sort of my community involvement. I've also been a volunteer big sister, and in fact, my little sister works up the street at GoPro Cameras and owns her own property, so I'm pretty proud of her. I'm running for office because I'd like to bring my business instincts and my, just, I think, technological background to streamline processes and come up with creative solutions to problems like traffic and bringing more businesses downtown and just general welfare. Oh, stop. Thank you.
Karen, I'd like to begin now and ask Josh a question that was put forward by the Chamber of Commerce. Josh, what do you think is the most serious challenge facing our community, and how should the city council deal with that challenge?
We are a city that's growing and in transition. I see that as, I see that as some of our biggest challenges. Handling that growth, handling the demographic changes that are occurring as a function of growth, I see that as the biggest challenge facing our city. We are an aging city. We have a growing senior population here. In the next 10 to 15 years, the city will be, a quarter of the city will be over the age of 65. In the workplace, we have, we're a tremendous job center that grow, that also is an engine for growth. And having over 60% of the workers in this county living outside of the county puts a tremendous strain on the infrastructure, and that needs to be dealt with as well. We have an aging infrastructure, sewer laterals, roads, transportation systems. These are all interconnected and a function of a thrive, it's a function of a growing, thriving city, so I guess in some ways it's, it's a, we're almost a victim of our own success in that regard. But this is a challenge that needs to be embraced holistically and fundamentally.
David, do I need to repeat the question?
No, no, I'm fine. Thank you, Alan. The most serious challenge facing our city is infrastructure. We are a post-World War II, pre-World War II community, in many ways still living with the infrastructure from the 1930s and 1940s. Our sewers are in horrible shape. Our streets are in bad shape. Our sewer laterals are in bad shape. Much of our housing for our seniors is in bad need of repair. The good news is we have a wonderfully dynamic and diverse city with an active, engaged community. Five of them you see sitting right here. Many you see sitting out in the audience. So it's a serious challenge, but it's not, it's not something that can't be overcome. And that's the great thing about it. We have some wonderful challenges. In terms of infrastructure, you know, our sewer system and our streets, we just passed, both myself and Robert in our first four years on council, passed a long-term vision for a street repair program. Joe Gothelz on our Public Works Commission helped to vet a lot of that procedure. Our sewer lateral program, we developed a sewer lateral program to help homeowners save 50% on repairing their sewer laterals. The business community also had a great deal to do with helping us address this infrastructure program. The city and The Edge, I'm sorry, the business community through The Edge funded a program with Comcast as a sponsor, where they brought us over a million dollars in high-speed internet service to our downtown, which greatly improved our infrastructure and high-speed internet capability downtown. So these are challenges, but they are exciting challenges that we're meeting head-on, that I've already taken steps in my first four years to address. I'm looking forward to working with the community over the next four years to address them, and we're going to get them fixed.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Robert?
David took my answer. We've been working as a council together to solve San Mateo's problems, and I think that we've made a good dent in that. So I'm going to go on to the future with my minute and a half that I have left. The challenge is going to be bringing together the residents, bringing together business, and bringing together city officials and experts, and looking at our growth for our city in the next 10 to 20 to 30 years. How can we do that? How can we do it well? How can we establish good traffic patterns with grade separations, good bike paths, friendly atmosphere for the aging, the elderly? And I actually challenged them at the meeting last night, because I'm right behind them a little bit. Every time they ask, "How old's old?", it's a year or two older than me. But I challenged them last night, because they're the institutional knowledge here in the city of San Mateo. There's a lot of expertise. They need to share that with us. They need to bring that forward so that we, as a city, can build the best vision that we possibly can for our city in the future.
Thank you, Robert. Karen?
Well, I'm a businesswoman, so I look at it in a monetary standpoint. I think we need to track more businesses. We need to bring technology in to alleviate traffic. I know they're working on a parking app that maybe could even incorporate stress levels of high-use streets. We have Wi-Fi, you know, that could be extended. My brother is the managing director of CBRE in the Silicon Valley, and he recently met with Sam Liccardo, who's probably going to be their next mayor, and they were talking about how to face their challenges, and they brought free Wi-Fi to the downtown. They're working on incentive packages to bring businesses. One of my clients, I work for an international wholesale company, and one of the clients went from New York to North Carolina because of all the incentive packages that the governors put forth. There's not a lot we can do, but I think in the end, that'll suffice everything else. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. David Lim will start with the next question.
Alan, can I answer that question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. I apologize.
Okay, sorry. So some of the things that we heard were the economic challenges when we have an infrastructure that's aging. We are going to see growth in San Mateo as a community. It's important that we address that growth, that we do it at the front stages. The same goals of The Edge should be the goals of San Mateo in addressing those things, where we're attracting talent to San Mateo, where we're taking care of the infrastructure before it ends up being so taxed that we see catastrophic failures in our infrastructure. The sewer system, the water system are things that absolutely need investment right now if we want to see that growth have a positive effect on economic development here in San Mateo. We need to prevent missing an opportunity like YouTube, so we need to make sure that we're attracting those businesses and keeping them downtown. If we do that, we'll see an economic success that allows us to pay for the infrastructure that we need. Those are the biggest challenges. I think going forward, we are absolutely headed in the right direction as a city, and we will continue to do that if we prepare with a solid infrastructure.
Joe, I apologize again. Of course. I'm going to get better at this with more practice. I really am. David, how important is the concept of civic pride in our business community today? And what specific actions can the government take to strengthen that civic pride?
You know, civic pride is very important. As we all know, in any organization, morale is a very important thing, and a sense of pride in our community is an important thing. One of the things I think that we, as a city council, and that I've done as a city council member to foster more civic pride, is to not treat it as an us-versus-them proposition. When I first got on the council, I heard a lot of talk that, "Well, do you support business interests or do you support neighborhood interests?" And my answer has always been, "I support San Mateo interests." Because what is good for the, what is good for the business community is good for our neighborhood, because it increases sales tax revenue, which means we have more money to spend in our neighborhoods on improvements and help with infrastructure development. What's good for our neighborhoods are good for our businesses, because those are the people who go to our businesses and support our businesses. And I'm proud to say that not just through me, but through work with the San Mateo United Homeowners Association and the Chamber, we've seen more collaboration, we've seen more working together to raise the civic pride of the business community and the neighborhood community. You know, we've done some wonderful things together with Neighborhood Night Outs, with more events in our downtown. You know, we have wine walks now, we have Bacon and Brew festivals, we have, you know, the leaders of the United Homeowners Association being judges. You know, we treat businesses fairly. We treat them like we would treat anybody else, and what the city council can do is act as ambassadors of goodwill to the community, and that includes the business community. Of course, we're going to do things that we've done in our first four years, which is to help businesses thrive by passing ordinances and laws that help businesses to develop, that make sure that they thrive within the context of the larger community, and we will continue to do that. But I'm just very excited at where we're going as a community, working together and not taking this us-versus-them mentality, and that's how you raise civic pride.
Thank you, David. Robert?
Civic pride is everything. In fact, that's why people live in San Mateo. San Mateo is a great city, and we have a great deal of civic pride. The Downtown Merchants Association, the Chamber of Commerce, Edge, city staff, many of the business people have come together and talked about how San Mateo can build its future. That really is going to be the question going forward, is how do we bring everybody together and continue that dialogue? You know, it is interesting, David described, and someone else described, the business versus citizens, and it's been kind of fun actually representing you the last four years, because I've had the opportunity to talk to people about Hillsdale Mall and about Hillsdale Garden Apartments. If we look at the Hillsdale Garden Apartments, you would think, "What's that got to do with it?" Affordable housing is a major issue, and the Bohanans, believe it or not, subsidized affordable housing at the Hillsdale Gardens for decades. When they sold their buildings, the rents in those areas went up somewhere between $400 to $700 a month. Why? Because they were running a shopping mall, and they were creating a quality of life for us on the other end of our lives. I think it's easy to take those things for granted, but it's allowed me a close-up view to see the contributions that businesses make to our everyday lives, and that they add to our quality of life, and together, we can continue to have a wonderful San Mateo.
Thank you, Robert. Karen?
I see it as twofold. We have to respect our history we have here. It's amazing. I'm a member of St. Matthew's Catholic Church, and we just celebrated our 150th anniversary. Fitzgerald Fields, where the DiMaggiros walked, I mean, that's amazing, and I know we're going to redo Central Park. I think it'd be important to put a historical element that kind of showcases these integral items. Also, in my travels with the retailers, basic things like high-power washing the sidewalks, I mean, it's an emotional thing. We have to rebuild our brand to get people here. I even think we ought to think about redoing our city logo. We need to have a more modern look. And that, look at Starbucks, how successful they are, because they have a nice cozy place to go. So if we have a clean place with not a lot of traffic emotionally, and great restaurants, people are going to want to come here and spend time downtown. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Joe?
San Mateo is a fantastic place. I don't think that we need to redo our logo. I don't think we need to change anything fundamentally about San Mateo to increase civic pride. Civic pride is seen in the residents every single day. When you look at the numbers of people who come out for the bayfront cleanup, or the numbers of people who come out for Music in the Park, or the numbers of people who come out for all of our programs that we have downtown, the Summer Fest that we had downtown this year, Bacon and Brew, National Night Out, when you see the downtown artwork that is being displayed downtown, yarn, yarn bombs, things like that, you see that people love the community that we live in. That's why we live here. We take ownership of it, and it's contagious. The San Mateo way that we have here is improving San Mateo every single day, and one of the things that I was particularly proud of this year were the partnerships, where it's not us-versus-them, it's just us, all of us in San Mateo working together. One of the partnerships, I know Anna Kier spearheaded this effort between San Mateo United and The Rotary, and bringing them together for the betterment of San Mateo. Those are the kinds of partnerships that going forward are going to be really positive, have positive effects for the city as a whole. There's only one issue in this election. That's quality of life for every resident, and when you see civic pride, when you see the quality of life go up, you see property values go up too, so it has tangential benefits.
Josh?
I see civic pride as summed up in one expression, "We're all on the same team." Whether it's the business community, the residents who live here, the local government, the school districts, everybody who's here, we're all on the same team. We all want the best for our community. And I see civic pride as an expression of that. I see the relationships that get built amongst the members of your neighborhood, of the people that you meet shopping downtown with the shop owners. All of those things build depth to our quality of life. I see this also manifesting itself when, in times of trouble. People want to go the extra mile. People will bend down and pick up the litter that they encounter when they're in their neighborhood or in the downtown, because they want to see our team succeed. And I see local government as a player in this, as one player in this. Civic pride is the glue that really keeps us all together, and I see us doing great things together as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Josh. Robert, we're going to start the next question with you. We've had some management changes in this city, or we're in the midst of management change. What would your goals be for the new management selections at our city?
I would be looking for a city manager that has showed, shown a history of vision for where they come from. Whoever comes to the city of San Mateo is going to have to be diverse in a multitude of expertise. They're going to need to know how to run planning, parks and wrecks, public works. They're going to need to know the state laws in reference to grants and different funding mechanisms. They'll need to know financing. More importantly, we need someone who can come in and help us mold a vision, that can bring the groups that I talked about, this is the third time, businesses, the citizens, the neighborhoods, the communities, the churches, everybody together, so that we can put our heads together and build a vision for San Mateo. I think that the person needs to be somewhat like a CEO. I think that the person needs to be somewhat like a CEO. They have to look at it from a business standpoint, but have the heart of Solomon, caring for all of us and being willing to put together all of our best efforts.
Thank you. Karen?
In that we have a lot of development going on, and there's been some hiccups, I would think this person has to have a lot of construction experience, legal experience, labor negotiation experience. But also, I've been thinking about this since I've been analyzing the structure of the government and our growth, and this question came up last night after our last forum at a neighborhood association. A woman asked me, who's very involved in the community, do you think it's working? And I said, it's funny you ask, because maybe we should consider shifting the model because of what's going on. I think that's something that perhaps should be considered and addressed.
Thank you. Joe?
The next city manager is going to have to face and address the challenges that we talked about earlier. Those challenges are infrastructure and economics. And so the person is going to need to face those things and address those things all at the same time. There are lots of projects that are going on right now that the city council just funded, and those things are all going to be going on at the same time. That city manager has to have an understanding of how those projects fit together and how they can be managed in a way that doesn't break up the city. Because there's going to be traffic patterns that are going to have to be interrupted. There's going to be economic issues that need to be addressed in order to pay for these developments as they're going. And so that skill as a manager, and understanding public works, understanding infrastructure is going to be key for the next city manager. Also, fostering the partnerships that we talked about earlier is going to be important. So the city manager is going to have to work with lots of different groups within the city, and get them to work well together. Those are the issues that I think the next city manager needs to have in order for us to see success.
Josh?
Silicon Valley, and San Mateo in particular, is a very unique place, and I think that's going to be very important for our next city manager, when he or she comes here, to really understand the history of the community as well as what the potential we have here contains. And in that regard, I'd like to see someone who can embrace those challenges that we discussed earlier, but at the same, but come at them with new ideas, and really looking at best practices that we've been looking at for a long time and may not have wanted to consider in the past. A fresh set of eyes to the problem. I think through that, though, I see this person also bringing a culture of engagement with the community. This cannot be led by a single person. This has to be done in a collaborative manner, because we all have a stake in this, establishing a culture of transparency and accountability. I see this person also coming in with really a positive attitude. In the past, oftentimes, when you present the city with an issue, oftentimes you'll hear why something can't be done. I think there should always be an attitude of how can this be done? And even if you have to think outside the box, you know, we have a set of tools as a community that is willing to embrace these challenges, and this person needs to be willing to embrace that as well, and serve as a key partner in that relationship.
Thank you. David?
You know, I think the new city manager has to be someone who's progressive, forward-thinking, is willing to think outside the box, but also has a very strong sense of fiscal responsibility in keeping us on the straight and narrow that Susan Loftus, our departing city manager, has put us on. You know, I was one of the biggest proponents over the first four years of making sure that we got through this, one of the worst recessions or depressions in the last hundred years. And Susan Loftus did that job admirably, to the point where she had to make some very tough decisions, and earned her retirement. You know, she had to make very tough decisions, and as a council, we had to make very tough decisions. So I don't think it's fair to say, you know, that she wasn't responsive. She was doing what she needed to do to keep the city on a sound financial footing. But as we're moving now forward, and as we're coming out of the recession, we have a chance to think of new dynamic ways to move our city forward. And so we do want to embrace that, and so we do need someone who's progressive, who's forward-thinking. You know, we have a great staff already. We have a wonderful staff in all our departments who do a lot of things that the public never gets to see. It's sort of like the old adage, you don't see when they're succeeding and doing wonderful things for us, you only hear about it when you want to complain about something that isn't going well. And 99% of what our city staff does is wonderful. So what we need is just a team player who's going to help us with that, who's going to work with the council, but more importantly, work with the community. Engage the business community, engage the neighborhood communities, talk about issues, not be better or smarter than anybody, but be willing to be a collaborative listener, listen critically, and get out into the community and find ways to move our city forward. And I think we're going to do that. So I'm very excited about where we're heading moving forward.
I think I get one more question. Do you have cards, Linda? Do you have any three-by-five cards? But I'll ask another question. I just wanted to know how many there were. But I'll ask another question to Karen meanwhile, one of our questions.
Yes.
Okay. Because we have time, everyone's being so good and keeping up with the time, this is We don't like to compare very often, but I'd like to ask you, what do you think the unique advantages or disadvantages of the city of San Mateo are relative to our neighboring communities? You know, we hear a lot about what San Mateo is, what the other communities are. What do you think those are?
Well, it's the reason I came here, the school system, the amenities. I'm a runner, I love to run out at the Reservoir. I live near Sugarloaf Mountain, and hike up there with my dog and my son. It's just naturally beautiful. It's old historic, there's about 800 old buildings downtown, and I love to see the mix of old and new. I think as we go forward, and people, we invite more businesses, I went on the wine walk, and there are some really neat things going on with warehouse conversions and interesting bohemian-type businesses, and I see it growing. Also, a very well-educated population, willing to volunteer and help the lesser communities, and I think we need to, and volunteer, we need to keep that rolling, and I want to be a big part of that.
Joe?
I think we have a lot of advantages here in San Mateo. We are a fantastic community, we have excellent parks, we have a tremendous community that is diverse, and diversity is our strength here. Diversity is one of the things that we can use going forward to make our community strong, not only in the diversity of businesses, but the diversity of people. You see that when you go to Central Park, you see that when you walk down Fourth Avenue. We also have an incredibly safe community, safer than I would say some of the cities surrounding us, and that's something that we need to continue to build on, because it's something that not only makes us feel good, but it also stimulates business. Fiscal responsibility is one of our strengths. San Mateo and the city council in the last five years has weathered one of the toughest economic storms, because they took on those challenges and faced them head-on. Disadvantages, since I have one minute left, disadvantages, we do have challenges that we've talked about already this evening in San Mateo. Our infrastructure is aging, our infrastructure needs help, so taking that challenge on, investing in it, spending the money that it will take to create an infrastructure that will allow us to see growth, not only downtown, but in all of our neighborhoods, is something that's very important. I think San Mateo's doing great. We're on the right track, so we're looking good.
Josh?
I would just sum up San Mateo with one phrase that, actually, I think it was Anna Kier who coined it, San Mateo really is the heart of the peninsula. It can be defined geographically, where we are, you know, between San Francisco and Palo Alto. We have great connections with the rail lines, with our roads. We have great bones here. And I think when you put on top of that a community that's engaged, that's really focused on improving quality of life, of maintaining quality of life, we're very collaborative. Our city council is very collegial. I've been around the county, I've seen both extremes, I prefer this one. I think we have a vibrant business environment that also is willing to look at really getting out of the box and stretching itself to create new opportunities, not just rely on what has worked in the past. I think as far as disadvantages, we've talked about this, we're, again, in some ways a victim of our own success. We have also, you couple that with aging infrastructure and an aging population, in a way, it really sets us up to commit ourselves to a vision that the city council has done already, and I think it's our job to stay focused on that, and realizing that everybody has a place here, and we can also thrive at the same time.
Thank you, David.
You know, I think the advantages of the city of San Mateo is we are the second-largest city on the peninsula. We are easily the most diverse, active, and engaged community of any city on the peninsula. We have diverse communities, we have a geographic advantage in that we're located between the bay and the ocean. We're located at the very strategic hub of 92, 101, and 280. So we have public infrastructure, we have, you know, Caltrans that comes down into us, Samtrans. So we are geographically located in a very advantageous position. We have a large tax base, we have a large active population, which gets engaged in the community and actively works together, both in the business and the neighborhood communities, to solve problems. It's a wonderful advantage to have, and it makes us by far the best city on the peninsula. Now, the disadvantage that we have is actually our council structure. We are a urban city with a suburban city council, we're all part-time members. And that can be a huge disadvantage for the city of San Mateo. But the way that we overcome it is by making sure that we have city council members who are actively engaged in the community. And I'm proud to say, in my first four years on the council, I've been active in the community through neighborhood meetings, through engaging the community. I return all phone calls from constituents personally. I have a 24-hour return rule for returning emails. I don't staff out my letters or responses or research on any issue, and I will continue to do that for the next four years. And I'll say something honestly, that is probably not a good political move, but Robert has been a great role model and mentor, he's also very active in the community. And the two gentlemen to my right, both Josh and Joe, in their times on the commissions, have also been very active in getting out in the community and taking a hands-on approach. I don't worry about us being an active council, no matter who gets on, and I've only known Ms. Schmidt for a very short period of time, but she seems like she's also very actively engaged. So we're lucky. It's a disadvantage, but we've got some wonderful people running who I think are going to overcome that.
Robert?
I understand the question to be, are unique advantages, how we compare with other cities, and possible disadvantages. The city of San Mateo is unique, I'm a real estate broker, I've been in real estate for 30 years, and everybody knows it's location, location, location. And that's your property values. It does have to do with schools, if you have really, really good schools, your values are going to be good as well. But let's look at San Mateo geographically. We have a bayfront that's absolutely beautiful. We can walk down by the Boys and Girls Clubs and look at the Golden Gate Bridge and watch people surfing right out there on our waterways. And what's right by there? Our bike paths and our parks. It's just a piece of heaven here in San Mateo, it truly is. That's only representative of one park, we have Sugarloaf Park, which is full of trees and wildlife and those types of things. Then we have our vibrant downtown. It's a small Silicon Valley in and of itself. It's a place where incubators, companies come to incubate, because they feel comfortable in our environment. Those are the advantages. I'm going to talk just real quickly, because I only have about 30 seconds, about the bigger picture, and that is the county of San Mateo. I honestly believe that we, as a county, should be looking at every city collectively, and that we should be looking to see what areas would best facilitate different types of business. I'll give you an example, San Mateo is short on land, so we don't have all the space that we would like to have to build campuses for some of these larger companies like YouTube. So geographically, we as a region should be looking at that, and we should be complementing each other and not necessarily fighting for business and those types of things. I think it would be better if we had an overall approach and plan regionally.
Thank you. Joe, I'm going to ask you, is Tim Draper here? No, no, okay. Draper University is a great addition to downtown. Are other ventures coming in, how can they be encouraged? This is a question from the audience.
I was there last week for the grand opening. I thought it was a fantastic event that Draper University hosted. I think that Draper University embodies the goals of the Edge, in that it is encouraging talent to come to San Mateo. It's building the infrastructure in terms of commercial space for those companies to stay in San Mateo. And it is promoting those businesses that people are aware of it. San Mateo is, we don't have to put ourselves on the map, San Mateo's already on the map, people know who we are. We've had and seen the opportunities for companies like this to be here before. In fact, YouTube, which Robert Ross just mentioned, did start here, and we just couldn't hold on to it. We can't miss those opportunities. The next Facebook, the next Twitter might start in San Mateo. It might be one of those companies that's being incubated by Draper University right now. So we can't miss those opportunities. If we are attracting the talent, if we're building the infrastructure, if we're making people aware that these companies are here in San Mateo, then they're going to stay, and they're going to benefit the taxpayers here in San Mateo, and we're going to see great things in our downtown. Me living so close to downtown, I love being able to walk down and see all the great things that they're doing. So that's what San Mateo can do going forward, is work with the Edge and see those things succeed.
Josh?
I was one of the planning commissioners that helped to approve the project for Draper University, and I saw its potential as being a real catalyst, not only for the downtown, but for the area in general. When you have a business that starts up and is growing, it's going to rely on other businesses in order to help it make it succeed. And in that, it propagates outward. So I see that potential, I see the potential as businesses grow and they develop and they make an investment in the community. I think we, as a city, need to make an investment in really the entire continuum of a business's lifecycle. So from its inception as an idea, through becoming a mature company that establishes itself here and takes the next step. I see our role as being a facilitator, being a listener, being responsive to the needs of these businesses, and really also as a sensitizer. I see, you know, it is a two-way street, so if businesses are going to be successful here, well, then they need to feel that they are part of this greater community. And they need to establish themselves in such a way that, you know, that we're, again, all on the same team. And I see the city as really being a, playing a key role in that part.
David?
To answer your two questions, are other ventures coming in? Yes, they are. And the role of a council member in that regard is to be an ambassador, both a goodwill ambassador, but also just a civic leader in promoting the city of San Mateo. So my first four years, I've gone down to Silicon Valley leadership conferences, I go to the lunches that Silicon Valley Leadership Foundation hosts quarterly. I pay my own way, I don't go on the city's dime, but I go and I sit there and I work the room. And I find out what companies are down in the Silicon Valley that might not be happy in Santa Clara or Sunnyvale, and I tell them about San Mateo, and I pitch it to them. I'm always out there, you know, going to different conferences, other city council meetings, to find out what's going on in other communities and see if we can use some of their best practices. And from those outreach efforts, I have gotten calls, and I forwarded them to our staff. There are always businesses looking to come to San Mateo, and I'm happy to pass them on to the chamber. I've sent emails to the chamber and to the Edge introducing them to various companies. I've gone to meetings with the chamber and the Edge to introduce companies. How can they be encouraged? How can we encourage them beyond what I just described? Well, what I described is a good start, but I'll share a story with you about Draper University. When Draper University first came, when Tim Draper first bought that property, there was a lot of pushback in the community. And a lot of people might remember that, at his first planning commission meeting, and Tim will admit this, I hope, he kind of came in saying, you know, look at me, I'm this big venture capitalist, I'm coming to the I'm coming to this small city of San Mateo, and I'm going to save you." And he didn't get a very warm reception from the neighborhood. He didn't get a warm reception from the planning commission. And my job as a council member was to be that bridge and be that ambassador and help them understand what is important to us in San Mateo. So, on a Saturday morning, after that planning commission meeting, I had him come to my house on my own time, and we went and we got coffee. And I didn't talk to him about how I would vote on an issue or whether I approved or disapproved of this project because that would be improper. But I gave him the names of people like Ben Toy, the president of San Mateo United Homeowners. I gave him the name of other board members on various neighborhood associations. I gave him the name of key members in our community. And I said, "It's not me that you have to impress and convince, but it's the community." And that's what we can do to encourage growth in our community.
Thank you. Robert?
I think Draper University has been quite a compliment to our downtown area. I believe that Mr. Draper is quite futuristic, and through that, I think, through his talents and his financial ability, I think he will bring good products here, and he'll bring people from all over the world that have different ways of thinking. That can only benefit us. His university is somewhat of a think tank, and it has the potential to solve some of the world's problems. I really believe it does. How can I encourage him? I've been chasing Mr. Draper. I've been trying to get him to work with the County Department of Health on an obesity program. I'd like his students to take a look at obesity overall, help develop a game, bring in some video game makers, and have them actually write the software for some game that we might be able to roll out in the schools. And that, from rolling them out in the schools, there'd be competitions locally, regionally, and statewide. I think that he's already on the map, but I think that that would put us further on the map. So, I try to encourage every business owner in San Mateo with creative ideas whenever I can find them. I try to open lines of communication between them and other people that might be able to help them better their business. And I, like David, attend to all these meetings and try to talk up and sell San Mateo to the right people.
Thank you. Karen?
Draper University sort of exemplifies my idea of recycling property. That was an old hotel that sat dormant for a long time, and now we've got a thriving school there. And when that happens, a lot of times, like these gentlemen mentioned, others come. And the hard part is everybody's so busy. How do you show it to them? How do they see it? I think what we're doing with business development and the website's wonderful, and we need to expand on that. Client testimonials are wonderful. We could, as I went on the wine walk, I discovered a flywheel press. This gal's doing old letterpress printing and teaching kids. So, there's all this wonderful trade, teaching shop-type things going on. And I think perhaps we should put together a video and go out and showcase these various upstart businesses. Last night, I'd never been to this place called The Tiki Lounge downtown, and after our last forum, I needed a beer, so went down there and met the owner, and I'd never been there. It was just a creative use of space. And he explained, I remember reading about this horrible accident he got, and he got some money, and he put it in, and he recycled this place. And I think if you showcase things like that, then it'll build upon itself. Thanks.
Thank you. Josh, I have a new question for you. This is something that I think is a good question to ask each of you because it talks about part of how the city is managed. What do you think is the role of city council members? What do you think the role of city council members is?
Well, I think the first thing is that the council does not involve itself with the direct delivery of services. I see the city council as a body that sets priorities, that sets directions, that really expresses values. The budget process, for instance, is a direct expression of the values of the city and the way it allocates its money. I see the city council and the individual council members also as a bridge, a bridge to the community. It's incumbent upon every council member to really have its finger on the pulse of the various neighborhoods. Every neighborhood across the city is unique. They are, among others, you know, really an important part of that dialogue that occurs amongst all the members of our community. And our community is not just the residents. It's also the school districts. It's also the various agencies. Robert spoke about these larger governmental bodies. You know, they are the ambassador as well, collaborating on these grander efforts. So, really, you know, they bring all these diverse groups together and then, you know, deliberate ultimately here within the city to see how we can most effectively meet the needs of our residents and the community at large.
David?
You know, the city charter says that all powers of the city shall be vested in the council, and it shall be the duty of the council to perform all the duties and obligations imposed on the city by law. And that means that we are ultimately responsible to the citizens of San Mateo. The people that elect us, the people that expect us to look out after their best interests. That involves members of the business community, members of the neighborhood community. But just because a person isn't involved in a neighborhood association doesn't mean they get less treatment than somebody who belongs to one. Just because somebody happens to own a business but doesn't live in San Mateo, they pay business taxes to the city, and so my obligation as a council member is to give them the same force and effect and the same time that I would give anyone else. So, my job and role as a city council member is to be responsive to every member of the city and help to enforce the laws and to help make sure that those laws are enforced evenly and equitably for everyone. You know, in my time on city council, you know, people have talked about and heard about, you know, 7-Eleven. They've heard about St. Matthew's Projects. They've heard about Bay Meadows and Hillsdale. What they haven't heard, and the things that I'm most proud of, is helping, you know, the owner of a small Chinese restaurant get his loading permit, helping a neighbor who had a problem getting a permit to trim her tree, helping a woman who was having trouble getting an answer from AT&amp;T about a cell phone tower in our neighborhood. Those are the small things that are just as important to those individuals as the larger issues. And so, if it is important to any member of the city, it should be important to the city council.
Robert?
It's interesting. Four years ago, I asked you for your vote, and you were kind enough to elect me to your council. I promised you three things at that time. I promised you that I would be accessible. I literally have had thousands of meetings with citizens, business owners, and just interested parties in our city. I promised you that I'd be inclusive. David described that. That is being open to everybody's view, being open to helping everyone that you possibly can. You know, I can find no greater joy in my life, I have to tell you, than serving you 28 and 1/2 years as your policeman because I was able to do that every day. It's just, when you're successful, I'm successful. When the community feels good about something, I feel good about it. I also promised you that I'd be accountable, and David alluded to that as well. And what that means is, we're providing oversight for city services. We're providing oversight for your tax dollars. We need to ensure that we are accountable to you for any questions that you have in regards to those. And I've certainly worked really hard to do that. I'm out of time. I have a whole lot more to say on this subject, but thank you.
Karen?
The other day, I was driving my son to school, and he said to me, "Mom, if you actually get a seat on this council, are you going to know what you're doing?" And I said, "Well, I don't think I'd be running if I didn't think I could handle the responsibility." And it is a big responsibility. I think people's money is a big responsibility. I always took it very seriously in business. I like to problem-solve. I feel I'm a very approachable person. I think this job involves interacting with all levels of the community. For instance, during the Fireman's Chili Cook-Off, I was walking around handing out waters with my name on it, and I met Herta Harrington, who's a widow now, lives in the Strafford, and was saying she really wants to be able to do volunteer work, but she just can't even use a computer, doesn't want to deal with it. So, the other night on our library tour, I'm going to the City Services Academy. I said, "If you want volunteers, go put flyers at the Strafford. I bet you'll get some." So, it's just doing things like this that I love to do. And, you know, from lower level to high level, business negotiations, just to make sure that, you know, everything's on track and everybody's thriving. And pull a little technology in along the way and streamline processes. I think I have very strong abilities in that regard, and I hope I can bring them to the table.
Thank you. Joe?
The city council has two very important roles that I think are above all others, and that is to have a vision and to represent the values of the community. The vision can be that we want a theater downtown and that that's going to change our community and have an impact on the way San Mateo downtown is run. The vision could be, we want to replace the Bay Meadows racetrack. It was historic, and we loved it for many reasons, but we have a vision of something else that can be there, and it will impact the rest of San Mateo. The vision could be, we have a master plan for Central Park that's going to have a relationship with downtown, where downtown businesses are going to see their folks be able to enjoy Central Park in a greater way. And the people who visit Central Park are going to be able to enjoy downtown in a greater way. It'll have a benefit for the city as well. And to have the city council not only present that vision, but also represent the values of the city so that we are spending our money in the right way. $119 million in our operating budget and $39 million, $39.9 million in the capital improvement projects that San Mateo is going to spend in this fiscal year. We are seeing this fiscal cycle. We are seeing an expression of the values of San Mateo, that we want a safe community. We want a community that is continuing to grow and investing in our infrastructure in a way that will plan for the future. And we are making sure that that future of San Mateo is beautiful and respects the quality of life that each of us expect here in San Mateo.
Thank you. This is a question from the audience, David. What are the three hottest topics affecting our city today?
You know, I think we've talked about some of these, you know, infrastructure. I know it doesn't sound like a hot topic, but I, you know, as a council member, I'm probably a little geeky. I consider hot meaning what are the most important, so not necessarily what's grabbing the headlines, what are people most talking about. And we talked about infrastructure, so I'm not going to delve into that. But number one, I think, would be infrastructure. Number two, I think Josh talked about, and I don't disagree with him on a lot of his issues in terms of growth and affordable housing. And in those regards, we are making a lot of strides to make more accessible housing for our community. That's important, and that's a hot topic for me as a council member because we have an aging population who's going to be looking in many ways to downsize into more affordable housing. We have a lot of young families coming into our community who we want to welcome, the diversity that they bring into our community, and the children, and all the energy that they're going to be bringing to our community. So, we want to have affordable housing for them. The third hot topic, which hasn't really been discussed, but I think is very important, is public safety. And we have seen a rise in burglaries throughout the state, especially in the Bay Area. Working as a district attorney in Oakland, I've seen, unfortunately, the rise in crime and in public safety. A lot of it has to do with state initiatives, an initiative called Realignment that has released more of our criminals back onto the streets with little supervision. That's important because if we don't have safe streets, then a lot of our foundation of a good community go away. But I'm proud to say, we have a wonderful police chief. We've done a lot to try to hold the line in terms of police officers. And so, our rates are increasing, but our solvability rates and our safety rates have not dropped, even as we've seen an increase in crime in the general community.
Thank you, David. Robert?
There's always various things that are challenges or struggles for cities, but, you know, when I was, I want to jump back to the last question. When I was asked, "What's so good about San Mateo?", I had location, 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 safe, safety. That'd be police, fire, your public works, your schools. It's beautiful here. Our parks and our fun downtown. But now, let's hit the three problems. One is financing. How do we continue to pay for our services? How do we continue to pay for retiree benefits and those types of things? How do we pay for everything? Basically, financing. Next is our infrastructure. We certainly have to address that, and we've made huge inroads, and we're continuing to do that. We've refinanced bonds and saved hundreds of thousands of dollars on the interest. So, we're moving in the right direction on trying to get our infrastructure together. The biggest thing, though, is, again, I'm going to keep saying it, it's the vision for our future. Growth was mentioned, affordable housing. Well, the question is, those are good topics, but how do we do it? What is the best way for San Mateo to do it? And if we phase it in, let's try not to tear the streets up twice. What's that mean? When they run a sewer line, why not throw fiber optic cable in the hole? Why not do some of those things? Because they come right behind, and another company is breaking our streets a second time. I think that the overall vision for our city and then timing how that growth happens and bringing everybody in to discuss, and I mean everyone, in to discuss how that growth takes place.
Thank you. Karen?
Now, I get the chance to talk about the disadvantages I missed. I've always been complaining about traffic downtown and on Hillsdale, and I think ways we can try to alleviate that is, you know, get more people on Caltrain, give them free Wi-Fi, work with the organizations to bring that about, let people know how to get there, come up with some kind of app. Here it is, again, the app idea with technology to kind of channel people. Affordable housing, I have a lot of single mom friends who, you know, they're professionals, but they have a hard time living here, and we keep coming up with this communal living idea. I don't know, the other night when I was touring the police, the fire station, you know, a light went on, like, gee, there's beds in the road, there's a communal living room and a communal kitchen. Could something like that really take off? Would older people want to live with younger people and interact? Perhaps that's something to look about and pursue. A third thing, I'm really troubled with all the legality that's gone on in lawsuits with cities. I think that's really dangerous, and we need to really look at our practices and our data transfer and just our attitude in general about how we approach things and, you know, safeguard against those issues.
Thank you. Joe?
So, I think the three hot topics are people, the businesses, and the infrastructure in that order. So, the people, one of the things that's been mentioned tonight is the Silver Tsunami. So, the way our demographics is changing is one of the hot topics that we need to address as a city council. The largest growing, fastest-growing population right now is the over-65 population, and they are going to live differently. One of the things that affects them is walking around downtown. The aging population in their 80s, 90s, 100s are going to drive less. The safety and the quality of the streets so that they can walk around our downtown is very important. The safety, from a public safety standpoint, having police and fire with responsive times is also very important to supporting our aging population. Also, building the infrastructure for them. One of the things that I do is I'm on the Peninsula Healthcare District Board, and we're building a senior living facility on Truesdale. It represents Peninsula Healthcare District, which is northern San Mateo, and we're building a senior living facility right there on Truesdale. And we're going to see more of those senior living facilities, and they're going to be built close to downtown. They're going to be built closer to parks so that they are supporting that aging population. The second thing that I think is a very hot topic is downtown. I mentioned that we had a vision when we put the theater downtown. I believe that this city council and the city council that is elected in this election is going to have a vision for downtown where we see just as many improvements to the downtown and the relationship between Central Park and downtown. And lastly, the infrastructure. The infrastructure is hot. If you look at the numbers, the numbers can be jaw-dropping on how much we need to spend. But it's about building the infrastructure that will support our population, building an infrastructure that will not discharge into the bay when there's a storm. These are things that we need to be doing for the future.
Thank you. Josh?
I think the challenges that we have can be summed up with the expression sustainability. And when we talk about sustainability, it's not just the environment. It's really what they call the three Es. You have economics, environment, and equity. And all three of those are challenges here on the peninsula and in our city in particular. And all three of those are challenges here on the peninsula and in our city in particular. And I think the city has really established itself with a vision to help meet those challenges. Really, it's a matter of putting all the pieces of the puzzle together so we can meet them all simultaneously. When we look at economics, we look at a growing workforce. Well, growing workforce needs housing it can afford to stay here. Otherwise, you have hiring and retention issues, you have salary inflation, you have a customer base that flees across the bay every night at 5:00 o'clock when it goes home to Alameda or Santa Clara County. We have an aging population here that has very specific requirements, that needs alternatives for transportation other than cars. At a certain point, cars just don't become an option for them. The same solution that helps bring workers in every day is a solution for our aging population. The environment, the signs of climate change are everywhere. We need to start addressing that, reducing greenhouse gases. Again, the pattern of development that we're establishing, that the city has envisioned within the growth areas of our city, help to meet those challenges. And then, lastly, we need the bones to make sure that we can maintain all of our success, and that's where we start getting into things like infrastructure and renewing the infrastructure that made us initially successful and will keep us successful in the future.
Thank you very much. I think, I have more questions, but I think it's time for the summation because we don't want to miss the summation. So, Robert, if you'll start, I'd appreciate it, and give us a two-minute summation.
Well, thank you again for hosting this forum. I really appreciate it. I'd like to thank everyone in the audience and everyone in the city of San Mateo who has put your trust in me over the last 33 years. It's been a lot of fun, and I'm hoping to serve you another four years. You do have my commitment, and that is, I'm retired. In the last four years, I've spent full-time working for the city of San Mateo, attending meetings and ensuring that our interests are covered and that we're taken care of. And my promise to you is I'll continue to do that for you, and I'll be very diligent. Thank you.
Karen?
I came into this race with blind ambition. I really don't have any political experience. I don't know how to deal with the media. I've made some mistakes already, but you know, you kind of learn as you go. However, I think that 25 years of hard knocks in sales and marketing is more than enough experience, plenty of business contacts, just amazing life experience to bring to the table, to be able to relate to all the different factions that come into the role, and to be able to make serious decisions. We've been through this horrible economic decline, and I kind of liken it to going through a divorce, which I did. I managed to get through the divorce and still stay in town and be a single mom, and I'm a survivor, and I know how to be resourceful, and I think that's what you have to do in times like these. But also appreciate the amenities and the great things we have to offer in our city, and make sure everybody knows about them and is able to enjoy them. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Alan, it's the people that make San Mateo great. It's the people up here, it's the people in the audience, it's the people at home on TV that make San Mateo such an amazing place. And it truly is great. I don't want to change San Mateo from a fundamental level. I want to just strengthen it and enhance it. It is a great city. We have so much to take advantage of. It really is. I have the experience to take San Mateo and strengthen it the way I was talking about. From a safety perspective, as a deputy district attorney, realignment is a serious issue, and we need to see the police department keep us a very safe city. As a Peninsula Healthcare District Director, I have faced the health issues of San Mateo. I know that going forward, we need to support our seniors and to support our young families, and keep them active, and give them parks and streets that will allow them to live healthy, active lives. And I've been on the Public Works Commission. I know that we face challenges with our infrastructure. I know that it's going to take serious commitment to building the infrastructure for tomorrow in order to make San Mateo successful, not just today, but into the next 15 or 20 years. I will represent you. I will listen to you, and I will make sure that when we make decisions as a city council, I'm representing my grandfather, who lives down on El Camino, and I'm representing my mom, who also lives in San Mateo, and I'm representing young families just like mine who walk their daughters to Central Park and go for a sandwich in downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Josh?
For the last 15 years, I've committed myself to this community, whether it's through my involvement in our local neighborhood association on the board, whether it's independent projects, getting a teen study center established in North Central at the King Center, even trying to get a farmer's market at King Park, you know, in order to bring fresh produce and connect people there. I've been involved, I've rolled up my sleeves and gotten involved in alcohol and drug prevention efforts in North Central. I've gotten involved on the commissions. I've worked on both the planning and the Community Relations Commission. I've been involved, and I've dedicated my life to really seeing the community around us to be a better place, and trying to leverage my talents and my knowledge to moving our team forward. And I see our community changing. I see forces at work that are, that will be occurring whether we like it or not, we are all aging. These are all challenges that require both creative solutions and a firm commitment to a vision, a vision of meeting these challenges while maintaining a quality of life. And I look forward to listening to you, to collaborating with you, to move our team forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. David?
You know, it's been an honor to be involved in public service for over 20 years. I started as a public school teacher in LA, coming out of undergrad, getting a master's degree and a teaching credential at UCLA, working in public schools, going to law school, stopping on the way to work for a member of Congress in Washington, DC, then getting my law degree and going into public service as a deputy district attorney, as a criminal prosecutor for the last 13 years, both in Alameda and Santa Clara Counties. I've served the public my entire professional career, and it is a joy and a privilege to work for the public. But I've had no greater honor than to be a member of this city council for the last four years. You know, I've been involved in city government for 11 years. I started on the Neighborhood Watch Board, I got involved in the Community Relations Commission, and one of the hallmarks of my time in community service has always been my belief that I should work as hard as I can, study the issues, learn as much as I can, talk to as many people smarter than me, involved in the issues, get their opinion, and then make the best decision for the community. Vote my conscience. And that's what I've always done in the first four years. You know, I've never shied away from tough decisions, I've never tried to punt on issues. You know, I've made some people upset at me, I've had people disagree with me, but I've never been disagreeable. And that's what I think is a hallmark of a good public servant. And I look forward to continuing to be that kind of public servant, to take on the tough issues, to listen critically to people, even more importantly, when they are issues that I might not necessarily agree with, to listen critically and make the decision, not based on what I want to do, but what is best for the city of San Mateo, for all of us, the residents, the businesses, and the neighborhoods. So thank you very much for having us.
Let me make a couple announcements. First, I want to thank you all, and thank you for your service to San Mateo. It helps make this community a great community, and I know a lot of us give in a lot of ways and volunteer and do a lot of things for this community, and it's a volunteer effort. You're not doing it for salary, and I have to give you a hand. You're part of what makes this a quality community, and it's just, it's great to live here, and I've lived in a lot of communities. I picked this as my final community to live in. So I'll be one of those old guys going around downtown for a long time, so don't worry about it. I'd like to thank John Emmons for being our timekeeper. It's a tough job, but someone had to do it, and you see how big he is? Okay, you're lucky you didn't go overtime because you didn't hear the next part of it. Let me say again that this will be on TV, and it's going to be on the 17th at 2:00 p.m., on the 18th at 9:00 p.m., on the 19th at 7:00 p.m., on the 21st at 1:00 a.m., God, on the 22nd at 9:00 a.m., and on October 23rd, Wednesday, at 2:00 p.m. And thank you very much, we really appreciate your time and efforts. Thank you.
Alan, thank you very much. Thank you.
And I'm sorry I didn't get to ask all the questions.